Good evening. These kids was everything. After it's eaten, now there's whatever. And then the person who says two weeks. Priestess and soul. It's all good. I can figure out. Saying it's my issue. I don't support this. So. And I think that's really the challenge of this system. I think so. I think so. They can say. I should know. Please talk to me with. Back eight. I saw. Same as saying, oh, we saw you. Want to. Yeah, we see your shadows. Like my initial. He's. So that's. So. Also, yes, well, that's. Like, yes, sure. Okay. I'd like to have.
Good evening. Welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the second, twenty twenty four. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Mark Thomas to lead us in the pledge of the flag. Please stand. The first item of business be to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda had submitted.
Second. Here are motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is statements or remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda for tonight. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? Do you want to announce? We have a couple of community. We're seeking citizen applications for the following boards. We have the community health. Community mental health, development disabilities and addictive disease community service board. This is for one appointment that begins March first, twenty twenty four. It's a three year term to expire in twenty twenty seven. Also, the Oconee County Board of Tax Assessors. We have one appointment that will begin April first, twenty twenty four, for a six year term to expire in twenty thirty. You can apply online at oconeecounty.com. The deadline for applications will be Friday, January the nineteenth at noon. Also announcement that we're our first town hall of twenty twenty four will be on January the seventeenth. And we're going to go over our tax exemption questions that'll be on the ballot again. January seventeenth meeting. That's also an opportunity for you to ask any questions of the board commissioners that you like or talk about any thing you'd like to see us do. Next time is to prove the minutes from our December fifth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes that's needed.
Okay.
You have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we're going to move into our hearing and actions on zoning matters. The rezone petitions shall be presented by county staff with no time limit. The applicant, those speaking to sign up for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes. Thus, the applicant's reserve time for rebuttal. And those that signed up to speak against, which shall also be allowed twenty minutes. The public comment section will then be closed and the board of commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions as they find appropriate. And then the board shall take action as set out in unified development. First item for tonight is a variance P twenty three dash zero two, three, four. Parkside Property Development LLC. This is a variance for the minimum required screening. This is five point eight zero acres located at thirty three eighty Hog Mountain Road and ten seventy eight Stillwater Way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty three zero, two, three, four. Parkside Property Development LLC and Athens Construction Group Holdings LLC. This is a portion of parcels B zero, five, H zero, zero, one, F and B zero, five, zero, zero, five, A. Currently zoned B two. In the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the property owner is requesting a variance from UDC section eight oh, six, B, which requires a buffer between any office institutional commercial use and any agricultural zoning district or any single family, two family, multifamily use or zoning district. This is the concept plan that you have in the application packets, a slightly larger version showing the fifty foot required natural buffer and the fifty foot natural buffer strip. That is part of the MPD of Parkside. Again, another exhibit showing the two strips. Their proposed variances to eliminate this fifty foot required natural buffer strip on the B two portion. Staff recommends approval of the special exception variance that does meet all necessary conditions to grant the variance with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see you this evening, and I hope you all had a great holiday season. And hopefully, this will be a great twenty twenty four, a great year for all, prosperous for all. Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Abe Abou Hamdan. Abe is fine. I'm the principal engineer with ABE Consulting. I reside at twenty. Well, our office is twenty four, ten Hog Mountain Road, and we have, that's Watkinsville, Georgia. And we have houses here in Oconee County as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see Mr. Here would put that playing back.
Concept back?
Plan back on the board.
So the request before you this evening is not really in direct saying eliminate this buffer. What we're saying is we are taking the this strip, which is natural strip. And this strip on Parkside property here, which is same owner of this property, was going to have a road connector right through it. Of course, as you saw in the rezone, we have moved that connector to a much better position and much more direct way. So what we're doing, we're going to take that natural buffer and put an opaque buffer system in it within that natural buffer. Typically, a fifty foot buffer is just natural strip. It's not planted, doesn't have a fence, does not have an opaque component to it. And so part of our request is we're committed to and presenting to provide an opaque buffer along these two sides that are but the R two MPD, of course, the park here. So, and I just wanted to remind you also that these buildings here, all of these in the back, were one story building, all brick buildings. And so we're not looking at imposing, you know, a big structure next to an R two MPD. And we are going to provide an opaque. And if, 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 allow me, the opaque, you know, there's a component to it. That's a privacy fence along with vegetation, you know, evergreens and deciduous. So, and that's, that's the plan from the beginning that, you know, all we're doing are shifting that buffer and implementing a much better buffer, you know, in a fake buffer. You know, as you know, in the wintertime, if you have a lot of trees in the fall, they, they lose their leaves. You can still have visibility. They also don't close or help with the sound or any that barrier. So when we have an opaque presented here, opaque buffer, that's going to provide us that additional protection, that additional, you know, barricade and visually will be more appeasing. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer any question, but I believe this is the right way to handle that situation. I haven't seen anywhere in the code that allows or requires, excuse me, a hundred foot buffer for any zone from B two to any other zones. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I need to get some clarification from Abe. If you could put the plat, the site plan back up. The. Make sure the, my understanding, because I, you know, I voted against the special use.
I understand, sir.
Because of obvious reason. But just to make sure on that buffer, those storage units, there will not be any roll up doors facing toward the neighborhood?
That's, that's not correct. The correct statement is nothing would be visible from the roadway, you know, on the inside, as I'm showing here with the laser along the roadway and the inside. All of those would have doorways on the inside. On the back, they will have doorways. Yes, sir.
Oh, but are there going to be roll up doors or just a doorway to?
Well, roll up doors on these, that's, that's, that way it was presented of the rezone.
So it's on the back side as well?
Right here, yes, sir. But here, what we're talking about during the rezone, all of these will not have any roll up doorways.
I go back to my question, that part of space in the neighborhood where you want to reduce the buffer.
Mm hmm. Yes, sir.
Has visibility to roll up doors?
It will have roll up doors, but again, we're presenting opaque buffer. So six foot privacy fence, vegetation. And, you know, along that fifty foot, so we're not going to be, you're not going to be able to see through that. I mean, it's, it's just, we're doing that on purpose to block not only, you know, visibility, but noise and again, make it more attractive.
Well, now, and also that. That's a drive access. How wide is that? I couldn't.
That is fifteen foot.
Fifteen foot?
Yes, sir.
Is that sufficient for?
It is.
Access for vehicle or?
It is. Yes, sir.
Tell me how that's going to be more attractive when you got front of a house cross and you got a truck or whatever unloading across the street.
Across the street from which one? I'm sorry. Well, the houses face to the inside.
Could be eating, having grilling out. You got truck.
I mean, you're going to have maybe, you know, a, a, a car, a small trailer pulled behind here, but there's nothing, you know, going to be in any size. Most of those will be on the inside, but this is a small drive to access the back of the building.
Still a drive.
It is a drive. Well, it's, it's not the backyard. You got fifty foot here, and this is also not right at the property line. And then this.
I won't beat the dead, of course, but.
Yes.
It's on the other side of the buffer. It's either front or back. So you're in the backyard grilling or you're going in the front door, one or the other.
Yes, sir. I mean, these will face the back, back side of those lots. Okay.
Hey, let me add, the other question I have, and I'll be wrapped up is the intent, I think, was to develop this portion pretty quickly or as soon, one of the first things to be developed?
It, it is not, it's not the first thing. The first thing is we have to do the connector road.
I understand that, but, but, I mean, my question is, it will probably be built before any homes are built behind it?
Yes, sir, it will.
So all we can hope for is that the buyer beware?
Everybody buying a house in Parkside will be fully aware, and these will be in and buffered before any house is built. So they will not come after a house is built.
Well, they won't come back later and say, my realtor didn't tell me that.
No, sir.
They won't do that?
No, sir. Because, again, this is the same owner, and the intention is, you know, to make them aware that, hey, this is what we've got.
I just wanted to get you on record. That's all.
Sure. That's not a problem. And, and like I said, again, when you have the same owner, the interest is on both sides.
Why not?
I mean, they're not going to harm our development on the other side just to have this development. So it having that buffer is really to protect the, the homes on the other side having that opaque buffer. You could put a fifty foot natural buffer, and that's allowed by code. That's all is required. But we're taking it a step further to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one question, one more. I'll let you go.
Sure.
I mean, even if you had the fifty foot natural, you could still put opaque buffer inside that, couldn't you?
Well, that's what we're proposing here, but what I'm saying, the requirement in the code for any buffer between these two zones would be a fifty foot natural or twenty five foot constructed buffer, opaque buffer. So we're saying here, we're keeping the fifty foot, but we're adding the opaque component to it to make it more, you know, of a barricade, more of a vegetation, not just have the natural buffer. So we're adding to that component, but the code does not require to have that. You could put that in addition.
Any other questions from commissioners? We entertain a motion on the variance.
Make a motion to approve variance P twenty three zero, two, three, four, Parkside Property Development LLC variance from minimum required screening. Aug Mountain Road, ten seventy eight Stillwater Way with the one condition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve variance P twenty three dash zero, two, three, four with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is variance request P twenty three dash zero, two, zero, five. This is Sean Hogan. This reduction in setback lines, it's point nine eight acres located at thirty twenty two Spartan Estates Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty three zero, two, zero, five. Sean Hogan, Structural Building Company applicant. This is C zero, three, V, zero, one, zero. In Spartan Estates Estates subdivisions, currently zoned R one in the country states character area. And again, the property owner is requesting a variance to UDC section four one nine oh, one, which requires all principal buildings on a lot. An R one district shall be setback from minor street right of way lines, no less than thirty feet. And due to survey mistake, the residence was constructed roughly twenty eight feet from the street right of way. This is the concept plans you have in your application packets showing the encroachment at that location. And staff recommends approval of the special exception variance that does meet all the necessary conditions to grant the special exception with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Hear from the owner, Mr. Hogan?
Hello. Happy New Year. I'm Sean Hogan. Do I set my address for these meetings, too? Four ninety four Boulevard, Athens, Georgia. I say, I agree with everything that staff has put forth. I just wanted to give you a little background. We had to move, we had planned to build that house farther back on the lot, but in order to allow for the septic tank and the soils, we ended up, as we were doing our planning, had to move it as far up as possible. My architect had one idea of as far up as possible, and the surveyor had a different idea. And I had my, the architect sets a plan and my building plan the entire time. We did the foundation for the main house first, then we came back and did that small garage. Well, I sent them out there. We had things surveyed and for the first wall. And when we did the, the foundation for the small garage, Oconee Foundation has just measured off to the front of the house according to my building plans. So a few weeks later, I'm going through and checking everything and making, there's a courtyard feature on that left hand side of the house. And the way it ties in, you have to have at least three feet for that roof line to come in, or it just wasn't going to come off. Anyway, I noticed it, and instead of just crossing my fingers and hope they didn't catch it at the, the CO, I applied, you know, I called the county, found out that would normally be within the the parameters of a staff issued variance, but the, I learned that, that that doesn't happen anymore in Oconee County, so I applied for the variance and I came through. It wasn't wanton. I, I, we do need to have that clearance between the small garage and the big garage in order to turn around and park in there. But again, when they did the foundation for the small garage, I was just going off of my sheet of music, and I didn't realize it until later. So I came to just give you all some background, and if you have any questions about it, you can ask me. All right.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
Maybe I need to ask one question of, of Mr. Herring. Will this variance impede in any way the safety of the neighborhood or anything? It's not going to affect?
No, sir. That's right. This is a, a variance to a setback line. That's right.
Now, can I ask the applicant a question? Mr. Hogan, are you, is this going to be your personal residence? Okay.
It's a spec house.
Okay. All right. That's fine. Thank you. Not on my salary.
Any other questions? We entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to, to make a motion to approve variance P twenty three dash zero, two, zero, five. Sean Hogan, reduction setback line. Point nine eight acres at thirty twenty two Spartan Estates Drive with one condition.
We have a motion and a second to approve variance request P twenty three dash zero, two, zero, five with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is variance P twenty three dash zero, two, four, four. It's Westminster Christian Academy. It's the way the sidewalk requirement due to steep slopes, existing utilities and public safety. Located, it's forty three point four two acres located at sixteen forty New High Shoals Road and eleven eighty five South Bishop Farms Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty three zero, two, four, four Westminster Christian Academy. This is parcel B zero, six, zero, four, zero, A and B zero, six, W, zero, zero, one. Currently zoned OIP and AIG, AG in the suburban neighborhood character area and the community village character area. The property owner requests a variance from Oconee County UDC ten fourteen oh, two, A to waive the sidewalk requirement due to the, the steep slopes, existing utilities and public safety. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets. This actually shows the sidewalk being constructed and the conflict points in, in several locations. And of course, this shows the variance without the sidewalk. Only the sidewalk would be installed on South Bishop Farms Parkway. Staff recommends approval of the hardship variance since that it does meet the necessary conditions to grant the variance with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Now we hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Chairman, members of council. Um, my name is Mick Kittle with SVG Planners Engineers representing um, the Westminster Christian Academy. Uh, so basically I just wanted to elaborate, you know, what we talk about with safety issues. There are no existing sidewalks on New High Shoals within the vicinity of the Westminster Christian Academy. Um, therefore, we feel as though it would be unsafe if you installed a portion of a sidewalk just in front of the school that essentially leads to nowhere. Um, it could, you know, potentially influence users to cross the fifty five mile an hour speed limit New High Shoals uh, to get to the south end, therefore just putting them in a, you know, really dangerous situation. Um, not to mention there are gangs of utilities, um, you know, street lights, uh, power poles, um, steep slopes for the swales and numerous other issues that would arise with the construction of the sidewalk. Uh, so in lieu of that, we are proposing internal sidewalk connections throughout the campus as well as remaining the uh, one on on South Bishop Farms Parkway, which would ultimately connect to the northern improvements that are in future plans. Um, so, you know, if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
I've got one uh, tonight and maybe. I'm sorry, the applicant, I'm sorry. Is, you mentioned y'all have an internal sidewalk system.
Yes, so there is a phase one being installed now, which is essentially a loop road that connects to the new South Bishop Farms um, connection on the, on the east side of the property. Uh, ultimately, when these new buildings start to come online with phase two, um, you know, future phases, we are going to have sidewalk connections that connects the existing buildings to the ball fields, to the new facilities um, with ADA focus as well. So there will be access for for everyone.
Uh, my question I really have is, is your campus open to where, if there is a neighbor that wanted to walk? Is uh, is it an open campus where they could access those sidewalks or?
Um, you know, if they're walking along New High Shoals on the street, there is, we did research, there's not an existing sidewalk, I believe, within a mile.
If they wanted to access your internal sidewalk system, is it available?
Yes, yes. And ultimately, it will connect to South Bishop Farms uh, with a sidewalk there. That goes up by the Georgia Aquatic Center and ultimately will connect further north with the improvements.
Okay.
To South Bishop. Yep.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve variance P twenty three zero two four four Westminster Christian Academy. Wade the sidewalk requirement due to steep slopes, existing utilities and public safety. Forty three point forty two acres, sixteen forty New High Shoals Road and eleven eighty five South Bishop Farms Parkway Institution with the one condition.
We have a motion and a second to approve variance P twenty three dash zero two four four with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is rezone request P twenty three dash zero two one nine. This is Chip Patterson, rezoned from AG to AR, four point zero one three acres. Located at twelve ten Burr Harris Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is P twenty three zero two one nine Chip Patterson. This is located on Burr Harris Road. It is parcel B zero five zero two nine. It's currently zoned AG in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request is rezoned the property from AG to AR in order to create two, two acre lots, one for each pre-existing residence. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets showing the existing structures and the two proposed lots. Staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. The planning commission also recommended approval with the same condition. Thank you.
And we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner. Patterson, yes.
Sorry about all the noise back there. I'm Eleanor Patterson. Uh, my address is twenty seven fifty nine Allegheny Lane, Watkinsville. And I'm just here representing Chip Patterson on this rezone. These are just two established homes that have been owned by one family previously and we're just um, hoping to subdivide them so they can each have their own two acre lot. And that's pretty much the whole thing.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezone request? Does anyone wish to speak against? There we go. In closed public comments. Any questions from commissioners? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to rezon P two three dash zero two one nine Chip Patterson, rezoned from AG to AR. Four point zero one three acres, twelve ten Burr Harris Road Residential with one condition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezone request P twenty three dash zero two one nine with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is rezone request P twenty three dash zero two two eight. This is Armor Homes LLC. This is a rezone from AG to AR, six point zero nine acres located in twelve fifty one Sykes Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is P twenty three zero two two eight Armor Homes LLC. As the applicant and owner, this is parcel A zero one zero six six F. Uh, currently it is zoned AG in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, they're requesting a rezone from AG to AR in order to create three, a three lot minor subdivision uh, with a private access drive. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets showing the the three lots with the private access drive. This is the architectural renderings or house plans proposed with the uh, request. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard one condition. And the planning commission also recommended approval with the same condition. Thank you.
And we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Hey, good evening. I'm April Mashburn. I'm at twelve forty one Sims Road. About a half mile as the crow flies from the property that we're talking about tonight. Um, I own Armor Homes along with my husband. We have three employees. We're a pretty small outfit. Everybody's local. Um, we bought this six acre piece of property, um, and we're asking for you to to approve the subdivision of it to build to a home on each two acre lot. Um, we are again local. We build two or three houses per year. Most of our work is siding um, deck improvements, basement remodels and whatnot, but we do build a couple of homes a year. So these would be specs ultimately, um, but we we do very high quality work. Uh, we stand behind what we build. We don't build cheap stuff. Uh, we don't build mansions, but we certainly build a high quality product. So we really are are uh, determined to add value to this community. It is our community after all and not deplete the value of the community. So um, yeah, we hired Brian Kimsey from Carter Engineering to do the design work. So if you have any technical questions, he'd be the best one to present those questions to, but I'm glad to answer anything that I can. Thank y'all.
Want anything, Brian?
Good evening, Mr. Commissioners. Um, Brian Kimsey, Carter Engineering, ten ten Commerce Drive. Just want to add a couple of things. The uh, the site layout that you see in your packet, that's really the best layout that we can have with topography, soils. There's also a little bit of wetlands in the back corner. Um, the the site was looked at for, there's already been a level three soil survey, so it was looked at for the soils themselves, how to lay out the septic system. Uh, the really the only in in uh, issue with the septic system is there's a well located on the adjacent property. We have to be a hundred feet from that for the septic system. So there's ample area for each lot to have their own septic system. The shared access drive will be paved, twenty two foot wide access drive along the lower portion of the property. So aesthetically, it will look, it will look really good. So I think that's really all I wanted to uh, to add to it.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezone? Anyone wish to speak against?
My name is Shane Cox. I live at twelve seventy one Sykes Road. I live right there beside it. That was my cousin's piece of property and um, so there's six point oh eight acres there. Um, according to what I understand is to go to AR, you have to have three two acre lots in full. And that asphalt entrance would be minus out of that. Um, can I ask a question or? That that now or no?
You can.
But i- i- if you had to have two acre lots to be AR, is your asphalt entrance got to be minus from that six point oh nine acres? If there is, there's no way to have three two acre lots, is what I'm saying. Do we understand? Um, my well is close to one of those houses. If we could bring that up and get a pointer of the actual uh, plan. So. Let's see here. This is me right on the road back right here, this line and back down. This is my house. This is my shop. That is my well, that little square. This house is basically right there near my well. Um, but each one of these are you know, just a hair over two acres, except for one of them that is two acres. There's six point oh nine acres total. If this has to be minus from six point oh nine acres, this whole entrance and y'all require two acre lots, the math doesn't work. Then from here to here is all wetlands. So I don't, I don't know if that's minus out of there or not. Also, at my shop right here, I have, I have a race car, okay? I I run it every couple of weekends. If these folks are going to be a total nuisance at all times, which I don't, I'm not after hours or anything like that. Um, that that's going to be a problem at some point in time. Um, I'm very friendly. I'm easy to get along with. I'm not revving engines at high RPMs and and my engine is capable of eight, nine thousand RPMs, but I don't do that. So i- i- it is a little loud. So I I don't know how a lot of this is going to go if if all this does go through. But my question is, is how can you have three two acre lots if this cul-de-sac and all this has to be minus out of the original six point oh nine?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, did you want to speak as well?
Thing I wanted to add to that, um, on the proposal is said that Armor Homes was saying that traffic would not be impacted um, by adding those three homes. And I don't know if you've tried to get out of Sykes Road and turn left or right out of uh, onto Hog Mountain, but it's already terrible. You risk your life turning left out of Sykes Road onto Hog Mountain and traffic is already backing up and especially since these schools have come in and all of that. So there will be a slight impact, in my opinion. There will be to the traffic and the safety of people coming in and out. There's been many accidents right there, um, where people running off the road for whatever reason and jumping the cover pipe and wanting it landing into a a field over there. So if you're sitting there at the stop sign at fifty three, you're going to be hit. It's been ha- it's happened twice that I know of. So if this does go through and there are, not that it matters if there's two houses or three houses, but it's, it is a big, it's an impact, in my opinion, and they, it's going to be. O'Conne is going to have to do something about that where uh, there's Sykes Road and then Hebron Church Road is across the street. I don't know if there can be a uh, roundabout, a four way uh, red light. Something really needs to be done right there. Adding three more houses and it was saying that, you know, a basic twenty four times of people coming in and out a day. Um, we are already impacted because three sixteen being there. So a lot of people use Sykes Sykes Road to get from three sixteen to seventy eight. So um, another three houses or i- i- if there's three people in that house, each house, that's nine cars. If there's drive, you know, three drivers in each house, that's more cars, more traffic. And if they've got kids trying to get to the schools, you know, it's, it's, it is a big, it's a big deal when you're trying to come out of it. Um, I don't know if anybody's ever done it, if you've ever been on Sykes Road and tried to get on fifty three. It is very difficult, depending on the time of day. It's really hard to get out. Um, so I don't, to me, it's kind of a traffic issue, a safety issue. That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. I'm sorry, did you want to rebuttal? Go ahead and close public comments this time. Any questions from commissioners?
I did have one. If, Guy, could you pull up the site plan of the flat? They try to read these on a laptop, sometimes problematic. But there's a, there's a sliver. It's called track two. What, could someone speak to that, to what, what that is and who who it belongs to or who is going to end up with it?
Yeah, I think that'd probably be a good question for the engineer to dress.
Sure, I can read it either. Let me open mine up.
It's just a sliver, so it's not, you can't build anything on it. So I was trying to figure out what it was about.
That lot. Uh. Is to be combined with, it's a little note there above it. That's part of, is to be combined with the parcel that's um, A zero one zero six six C.
Be combined with which side of, I mean, is that the?
The 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 lower side.
Was being rezoned?
Yes. Yes, it's can be combined whenever.
Does the applicant own that? I mean.
Yes, the applicant would own that.
So that's part of the rezone as well.
I don't know that we.
Six point oh nine acres.
Yeah, that's right. The point oh eight seven two, is that what you're saying? That little sliver there? That's right.
Part of the.
That is part of the overall. That's right.
And one more, I guess somebody may want to ask this, but Guy, could you speak to the issue about the uh, pluses and the minuses on the driveway, how it impacts the acres? But I'm curious about that as well.
Yeah, that, the private access drive is actually an easement.
So it is part of the two acres.
That's right. Each of those lots will have part of that private access drive in their total acreage.
It's not subtracted.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
So that'll be maintained totally by the homeowners.
Yes.
There's no deed now to the county, so.
That's correct.
Um, Guy, while you're there, it, I did notice in the notes, it looks like that the county water is going to be supplied to these lots as opposed to wells.
That's correct.
Yeah. And then um, I think um, Mr. Cox, one of your concerns about the septic, uh, when they do that, they will have to be, your well will have to be taken into account when the septic system is is put on that lot so that there's proper distance away from uh, your well to install the septic system.
Oh, you own it?
I can't reach that.
Let me correct that. This is, the Z bar, see the Z bar there? That is his.
I own that triangle. I bought it from the man that bought it from my cousin and then these folks have bought it from them after that. That is point oh eight or point oh nine that I bought from the guy that bought the place from my cousin. So that is not part of those six acres.
But this is kind of confusing because it says to be combined and.
That's the.
It's me.
Oh, okay. Okay. That is what I too was thinking about. That's, that's my fault. The Z bar there indicates that line goes to the.
Well, I wanted some clarification because when I visited the site, I knew that was Mr. Cox's driveway.
The, yeah, the top line I own and I own to the bottom dark line. It comes straight off my back pan, comes out there and spreads at the end. I bought that. Six months to a year ago from the guy that had that large piece. Yes, yes, or I wanted to straighten it out, you know?
All right. Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, the, 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 the property line will go through that. There'll just be an easement through, through the property. And to address, uh, Mr. Thomas's comment, there's the, the soils below that house, you see the circle for his, um, his well. A hundred foot diameter circle there. There's ample soils below that for, to, to serve for that house that would stay outside. Uh, the, the required state requirements for the hundred foot setback. So it can be set on either side. The septic could be set on either side. That's the high spot. Falls back towards the, towards the wetland and it falls to the, to the front.
Any other questions for commissioners on this? Entertaining a motion to rezon?
Make a motion to approve rezon P twenty-three dash oh two two eight as presented. With the one condition.
Yeah, a motion and second to approve rezon request P twenty-three dash zero two two eight with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now moving to resolutions, ordinances and policies. Next item is the discussing consentor of the deannexation of townly property from the town of North High Shoals. We do have quite a few people signed up to speak. We're like going to allow twenty minutes on each side, just like we would normally do. Uh, so when you call, just remember there's people behind you, so. Just a little background on what's going on here tonight with this. Uh, prior to twenty twenty-three, cities and towns in Georgia had the ability to exercise nearly unlimited powers of annexation. Uh, the creation of new cities, mainly in the metro Atlanta area, have become very frequent occurrences. In some cases, entire unincorporated communities were incorporated into a new city despite objections from the majority of that community. Remember some of this in the legis- in, uh, the news up around Powder Springs was the latest city that was added. And those residents had no way to, to back out of that city or in any other situation. So last session, the House of Representatives and the Senate approved, the governor signed House Bill three seventy-four. This deannex takes deannexation control and gives it back to, um. Excuse me. So prior to the approval of the House Bill three seventy-four, deannexation was controlled totally by the town or city's governing authority. House Bill three seventy-four places the power of deannexation with the property owner as long as the, the request complies with certain conditions. If the conditions of House Bill three seventy-four met, governing authority of the municipality corp- municipal corporation shall approve such deannexation unless it impacts health, safety or welfare. Just a couple of things on facts because I've, I've received a lot of calls and questions about some of this, uh, over the last several weeks. The subject parcel is located in the rural places character area. And the rural places character area allows for four to five acre lots. Five acre lots can be accomplished on the subject parcel without a county rezon. Four acre lot subdivision will require a county rezon, similar to what we just went through with these things just a few minutes ago. Any statements that you're hearing that, uh, quote lot sizes of less than four acres is not consensus, cons- consistent with a comprehensive plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Also, some bits and questions about the potential development of acreage beyond the subject parcel. That remains the same whether this property is deannexed by the town of North High Shoals or not. So there's no change with that. The real, the question for the Board of Commissioners tonight is do we object to the town of North High Shoals deannexing the, uh, this parcel? So with that, we're gonna go ahead and take some public, well, any con questions for anybody here? All right, so we're gonna start with those four. Uh, Mr. Wills, would you like to speak?
Thank y'all. My name is Russell Wills. Uh, address is ten thirty Settlers Pass, Athens, Georgia. Um, I'm a town and family partnership. Uh, probably most of y'all know, uh, town and family partnership, Tony has been acquiring farmland in O'Cony for thirty some odd years. Most of the large tracts of land kind of south of fifty-three. He, he's bought a lot lately. Um, this one we bought in September of twenty twenty-two. Um, we've bought several other truck tracks in that same time period. Most of the other tracks we've bought had been cleared, scrubbed, planted. That's about a two-year process to get grass and then probably five years before you have good grass. Uh, this particular property had a, about a two-hundred acre hayfield, uh, in the backside on the other side of Lane Creek. Um, so it was our primary purpose to buy this property for that two-hundred acre hayfield, um, and to expand that existing field. Um. The current bridge that crosses Lane Creek on the property, which is the primary access to get to that back hayfield, it has a small bridge on it. Uh, maximum, uh, weight is ten thousand pounds dispersed across the bridge. Um, this hay season, we weren't able to get back there with hay equipment just due to the weight of the hay equipment. And then ultimately bringing hay bells back out on that little tiny bridge would be impossible. Um, so the last several months, we had a lot of options and, and how to utilize that back portion and get to it in a way that's feasible, knowing that. We could have thirty thousand pound equipment coming in and out of there. Um, we've looked at building a lake and use of the dam. I know probably most of the people here speaking in opposition, it's in a site plan we talked to North High Shoals about. Um, you know, we've looked at just putting pipes in versus bridges. Um, so we don't, at, at this point, we know we're, we're probably gonna lean towards putting in a big culvert, uh, over Lane Creek. Um, that road would probably be built to county standards to get back there, uh, wide enough to be a, a road. Um, the, the engineering folks, just with the sheer weight of the equipment, they're sort of do it. So because of the size of the bridge, it's gonna be about there. Our goal or our plan is just to go ahead and punch up a road in there. Um. So with the front, uh, properties, there's been a plan to, like I say, do some large acreage lots, just all set the cost, cost of that bridge. Uh, there's been some plans just to clear it and fence it for cows. Uh, there's been plans just to leave it in timber for now. Um, but in looking at all these options, exploring our options, we went to North High Shoals. Um, cause we're, right now, we're, we're in joint jurisdiction. High Shoals controls about thirty percent of the land. The county has jurisdiction over the remaining seventy percent. So whether we're building a lake, whether we're, we're doing a couple of lots, whether we're building cattle barn. We're, we're right now, we're playing both sides of the fence. So we need to fall under one, uh, zoning ordinances. So we talked to the city about the possibility of what a residential, uh, small residential development would look like. Um. And we, we explored that with them in the process. We got made aware of the new legislations that's come out on deannexation. Uh, with seventy percent of the land being in the county and thirty percent being in the city, being in the county makes a whole lot more sense. Um, you know, today we don't have a specific plan on what we're gonna do. Um, but we know whether we're farming, whether we're doing large lots, whether we're building a lake, we've got to be under one jurisdiction. And our preference is to be within the county. The, the U D C of the county has been updated much more recently than that of High Shoals and continues to be updated. Um, I know some of the opposition is worried about development. Um, I guess what I would say to that is if you look at Tony's track record of acquiring land. He's probably the biggest land preservationist, conservationist the county has. Um, he's got. Close to four thousand acres. The majority of that is cows. Uh, we bought phase five of Lane Creek subdivision that was about to be developed by a developer. Then cleared it and put cows out there. Um, so all I can do is speak to Tony's existing track record of continuing to buy land. Put it into pasture, put it into hayfields. Um. Like I said, we don't have an exact plan. I know people want an exact answer of what we're doing. Um, right now, we gotta get under one jurisdiction to even explore what the options are. Um, but even if we were to get into ag zoning, we would still have to go through. Uh, Guy and his staff in terms of development and looking at, you know, e- everything that goes into that, see if it's even feasible. We have not done any of that work to even see if developing it would be possible. Uh, whether it be soils, rock, roads, whatever. Um, I don't know if that helps anybody to know that they're still, just because you're an ag, I mean, you can just blow and go. There's still an actual process to get a preliminary plat approved.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Now we'll move into those signed up speaker again. All right, first is Mr. Stephen Goode.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name's Stephen Goode. I live at two ninety-nine Hopping Road in High Shoals. And I happen to be the mayor-elect, uh, for the coming term. I've lived in O'Cony County over thirty years. This is my second stint in High Shoals. The first one was ninety when I moved to O'Cony County. And it's always been a tight-knit community. And if you know the history of High Shoals, it's been on record since seventeen ninety-four as a community. And two, let's see, two thousand, uh, nineteen twenty-eight as a municipality. It's a very tight-knit community. I've heard from a lot of, uh, neighbors and friends that there's great opposition to this. And I've taken a lot of phone calls the last several weeks. And the one thing, you know, I listen, I, I listen for what I do not hear. And what I do not hear is anybody in favor of deannexation. I, I do not hear anybody say, we can't win this. I don't hear anybody say. This might be a, might be a good idea. None of that comes about. It's complete opposition from everybody I hear from. Who will be constituents, uh, in the town of North High Shoals. So I'm gonna let the rest of the citizens, uh, bring up the points. That make this, that cause this to be a bad idea and would harm, uh, North High Shoals. Thank you.
Christopher, I can't read your last name, sorry.
Hello, my name is, uh, Chris Bell. I'm new to North High Shoals. Last couple of years, I've got five children, my wife. We live there. We love the community. It's been really exciting. We moved here from Clark County looking for this kind of setting. And, uh, probably most anybody can see my wife any day of the week, walking our kids up to the elementary school, cutting through with permission from the principal. The, uh, playground and attending school and then walking back down. I'm sure you probably know I'm at two oh two plantation. There are not sidewalks on that road nor there sidewalks on Jefferson County. That's one of my primary concerns. We moved there because it is a small setting and we greatly enjoy it. Uh, some of the things that I'll submit this for your review, but there's health, health, safety and well-being breaking this down. Infrastructure, there would be increased demand on stormwater sewage, roading, energy and water supply. I can appreciate that they bought the land perhaps with plans for raising hay, et cetera. And now it looks like it might make more sense for them to, uh. Raise houses instead. We're worried also about the water quality. There's a lot of vegetation clearance, release of silt and contaminant loading, stormwater runoff. And onsite effluent treatment and disposal systems would obviously be necessary regardless of whatever their plans are or aren't, and they haven't decided. One of the things that we need to be cautious of is this starts to expand with smaller lots, more houses, more traffic, safety. The hazards, there are additional allotments within the areas that are subs- susceptible to natural hazards, including increased traffic and the need for traffic control. There are references included with my submission, uh, but the traffic control, there would be an average of seven point seven nine of vehicle trips per household per day. And so whether we're talking about, uh, phase one, phase two or beyond, we're starting to look at incredible traffic loads on small streets. And that's obviously gonna be concern for our city. The well-being, there's cultural and heritage, as has mentioned. It's a very old establishment, uh, stab- and the subdivision land development was the potential to modify or damage historic, archaeological, of which there are. And cultural, uh, sites and landscapes. The land form, there would be loss of productive soils, loss of natural landscape and character. And that's part of the reason that I moved my family to this, uh, town. And increased demand for infrastructure, community facilities and transportation, and a change in the amenity values, uh, in social cohesion. So I just wanted to bring these matters to your attention and I can submit this for your review if you'd like, but thank you very much.
Jacob Callaway?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, I saw Chris's kids playing on the road today, as a matter of fact. I wanted to touch on a couple of things. Um, the mayor-elect, uh, Mr. Goode. Uh, we all, we, we also had, uh, to, to kind of add to his sentiments about the outreach. Um, from the residents. We held a town hall meeting on the seventh of December. I think we had about thirty-three residents in attendance. And, uh, in that town hall meeting, um, there was a lot of, um, outcry and opposition from the, from the residents of High Shoals. Concerns about the potential deannexation and development of the subdivision. Um, we then had a city council meeting on December eighteenth and again, big out turnout with opposition. Um. Mr. Chairman mentioned the, um. The legislation that deals with this deannexation, which is very new legislation. Um, in my opinion, it's pretty bare bones when you read the code section, but. The, uh, what we didn't mention was the actual intent of this legislation. Um, as he did mention, uh, there's a lot of cities that were grabbing land from unincorporated counties. Um, whether it be through the, uh, the use of public utilities. Um, I'd like to make a point that, uh, this particular parcel and that we're in question was never, um, forcibly annexed into High Shoals. Historically, it has been inside of the city limits. So I don't feel that, that code section is, uh, follows the legislative intent set forward. I'd also like to, um, add on to what Chris was saying a minute ago, um, about the, the health, safety and welfare, the detriment to the health, safety and welfare. Um, as you can imagine, there is a, there has been a site plan that was approved or submitted previously. Uh, when the rezone application was first filed with North High Shoals. I believe that included thirty-two houses in that development. Um, that's probably doubling or tripling the amount of houses on Jefferson Road currently. And I'm sure many of y'all have been down Jefferson Road before. Um, pretty small road. Um, there's a lot of blind spots. Sightlines aren't the best. And also there's some very old houses on High Sho- on Jefferson Road. And, um, the setbacks on those houses are pretty close. So families like Chris's, myself, I live on Jefferson Road. And other families, these kids play right in, right up to and in the road, riding their bikes and skateboards and that sort of thing. So when you're, um, exponentially increasing the traffic on that road, you could expect that there will be concern for the health and safety and welfare of the residents. Um, on Jefferson Road and the other, um, connecting roads. on Jefferson Road and the other connecting roads, like the, like Plantation and other roads in Jefferson. Also, I, I feel like it would be an undue burden on the remaining residents of North High Shoals if said parcel was de-annexed out of High Shoals. The remaining residents would be picking up the tab for any impact on the infrastructure in the city. And you'd be pulling that tax basis out of the city. So it would be disproportionately affected by that de-annexation. Also, I think maybe one thing that wasn't ever considered with the legislatures is a case like this, you're pulling on a, on a thread of the fabric of the town. And if this de-annexation is passed, then what's to stop other de-annexations inside of High Shoals or other municipalities in the county or in the state for that matter? So with all that said, myself and many of our neighbors, we would like to urge the council members or the, I'm sorry, the commissioners to not approve the resolution. Thank you.
Debbie Tiller.
Good evening, darling. A lot of you I haven't seen in a long time. It's nice to see you again. Thank you for allowing me a minute. I think the gentlemen before me have said everything I could say. I'm just a little bitty landowner that we own the adjacent property that Townley has purchased. So we were thrilled because we thought we would have cows and hay, not a subdivision. So naturally, we're not thrilled. We prefer you not approve it. And our property will be directly joining theirs. So therefore, we have cattle. We have pigs, we have farm animals. And our fencing is going to, it's an electric fence. We don't want children from a subdivision that's curious about a farm, because they haven't lived on a farm, coming over and being harmed in some way on our farm because they touch our electric fence, even though we have it posted and we have it, we'll have it all secure. We just don't want that to happen to any child and especially on our property. We also want to protect our animals because we know how children are just very adventurous. And they could take BB guns, pellet guns and aggravate our animals. So we don't want that side of it either. We've fully voted for you to deny the request and to do cows and hay. That would be perfect.
Ed Johnson.
I want to thank the count, the commissioners and chair for listening to us. A lot of the points I've already made to y'all and Mr. Callaway made very effectively. I wanted to echo one thing that Chair Daniel and Mr. Callaway said about the intent of the original legislation last spring was to clawback annex land. And as Mr. Callaway said, this was not annexed land. This would set a precedent that the county would be saying, we are going, we're ready to accept, bring it on from all the cities in the county. If people want to de-annex from the historical limits of the cities of Watkinsville and Bishop and other cities, that we're willing to accept that back. And I would like to ask the county commission to say no to that, not from the historical limits. I understand if this was something that was within the intent of the legislation, but it is not. And I would, my main points, as I've already submitted to all of you, had to do with the remaining welfare of the community and citizens who are remaining in the town. This is going to increase the traffic impact on the roads and other services we provide in the town, which those people will be welcome to come to our town and use the park and everything else. But they will not be contributing to paying for any of those services. And there is no other place for them to empty into the city except right directly into the city on whatever road is coming. The, this, I have not heard any mention of the cattle being put on that land. This came to the council first, the attention of the town, when a plan for a subdivision with lots and road and discussions how that would be was presented to the city. Not with the discussion of, hey, we need a throughway to get to Hayfields. That, that was not presented to the city. So last point I'll make about the, there's been multiple meetings in the city and citizens are voicing their call for you to say, vote no on this. I communicate with over half the citizens of the town. I've communicated on this issue with them. And I've been having multiple, I've had no one send back and say, hey, I think this is a good idea. Tell the commission to vote yes. They've all uniformly come back, some of them developers themselves, and said, we would like to maintain the historic borders of our town. And we are work, you know, willing to work with the, the community, the people who want to develop houses and other things on them as we have in the past, and they're right to do that. But the community is very much against us. And we hope you vote to turn this down. Thank you.
Don Westman.
Evening, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to have a few moments. I pretty much think that what has been said is pretty much what was going through my mind as well. It is a beautiful little town. We'd like to keep it quiet, safe. There are wonderful families that live in there, many, many children. It's good to hear children laugh. And they are playing right on the roads because of no sidewalks. I can't imagine the traffic that, what a mess it would make if more traffic comes through there. I am for putting cows and hay on, on the land. But the annexation is only going to cost us and, and take the historical importance of that town away. And it shouldn't happen that way. You know, we, we love our High Shoals. I think what has been said before, I would wish that you vote no for that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Stephen Hall.
Hello, Chairman, Councilman, Councilwoman. I'm a resident, been there for about a year and a half. So every day I learn more about the historic nature of the area. I live on Jefferson, and I already know how hard it is to maintain speed and the amount of traffic that comes down that road and goes up that road. Not, not many of them obey the speed limit. I can only imagine what would happen if we had 35 houses and have no ability to maintain roads or enforce speed limit. So all my predecessors speaking tonight have very well conveyed everything I've heard in the meetings that we've had. And I would encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Rhanna Neads.
Good evening. My name is Rhiana Neads. I live at 144 Plantation Road. And I just wanted to echo my neighbors and say that, that please don't vote for this, don't approve this resolution. So, thank you.
Lambeau.
Hello, I'm Vita Bell. I live at 212 Jefferson Road in North High Shoals, where I've lived for over 42 years. And I strongly oppose the de-annexation for all the reasons that the people before me, my neighbors have stated. I don't have a problem with cows being out there. The traffic on Jefferson Road is unreal. Some of you know where I live. I live in the Fork and the Roadhouse. And up and down Jefferson, it's non-stop. And it would be a nightmare to have 32 more houses, plus many more houses with all the traffic there. It's, it's unreal. I encourage you to vote no for the de-annexation. And I thank you.
Ann Evans.
Ann Evans, 280 Hopping Road, High Shoals. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would also ask that you not approve the de-annexation of High Shoals. I've lived there for about 20 years and the traffic, I'm on 186. The traffic is busy there in the morning with the school. And also, when there's going to be more houses or if there's a subdivision and there's a backup of traffic on any of these smaller roads, there's not going to be a shoulder for any emergency vehicles to, to go through, to get around, to respond quickly to any type of emergency that they would need to. So just another reason for the safety and welfare of the town. Thank you.
Jennifer.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Burrell. I live at 140 Plantation Road. I feel like all my friends and neighbors who have spoken tonight have done a great job of talking about our concerns. The one piece that I will add to the puzzle here is that I want everyone to be aware that the speed limit on Plantation Road and on Jefferson Road is 20 miles per hour. That is less than you find in your typical neighborhood, being at 25 miles an hour. I have two children. My boys both play lacrosse. They practice lacrosse in the street. When I go to visit my neighbors, I walk in the street. We have no sidewalks, but with the speed limit being 20 miles an hour, you feel safe in that road. I have a labradoodle. She and I walk to the park every single night and do a couple laps around the park and then back to my house. So I just come before you tonight to say, please, we are asking you to vote no to the de-annexation. Thank you.
Steve Tucker.
Hi, I'm Steve Tucker from 245 Shady Phil Lane at Bishop, but it's really North High Shoals, Georgia. And I just wanted to ask the commissioners, well, first I wanted to say that my personal belief is annexation is theft. I think it's a terrible idea, sets a terrible precedent. We don't know what kind of development's going to come out of this in this tiny little town with more deer than people. And I just wanted to ask the commissioners to search themselves, do the right thing and vote against annexation. It's, it's a really bad precedent. Thank you.
Wanda.
I didn't know I was going to be called on, but I did have some, something to say. My name is Wanda R. Moody. I live at 198 Shady Phil Lane, Bishop, Georgia, in High Shoals. I've been there 43 years. And my, I am against the de-annexation. One reason is because on our road in the past two to three years, and particularly in the last nine months, five new houses have been built on, on our one street. It has completely changed the whole dynamics of the street. And if you want to see that quadrupled, vote for this. Thank you.
Ms. Westmore. Westman, you want to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen. I oppose this for all the stated reasons that were put forth this evening. So please don't make it happen. Thank you.
Patricia Sibley.
My name's Patricia Sibley. I live at 115 Jefferson Road. The one thing that I would like to add to this is that Jefferson Road, at that point where they're talking about a road coming out, is 14 feet wide. What's a county road? This is a little town road. So you talk about what traffic's going to do, the traffic situation, the speed limits and all those things. But think about that size road, and they're not going to pay for any of it if it's de-annexed out. The city will have to pay about what are we going to do about taking care of that road? So when we ask you to please vote to de, not to de-annex, then we have a real good reason for it. And it's going to be something that we think is not only the precedent that could come out of that.
Thank you. Joy Sizemore.
Hello, my name's Joy. I live at 297 Jefferson Road. I've lived there for 20 years. Moved out to that area to raise our son. And I vehemently oppose the de-annexation of the property. Just like everyone else has said, where will it stop? If you vote to de-annex this, what's going to stop any other developer from any other of our small municipalities to come and say, hey, I want to de-annex this property? Or what's going to stop several residents of High Shoals from, from getting together and saying, hey, we're tired of paying city taxes on this property or these roads? And what's going to stop me from saying, hey, I want to de-annex my property? I don't want to pay city taxes anymore. So I ask you, where will it stop? And I want to give you a personal experience of mine on Jefferson Road. I have a big dog and I walk him on Jefferson Road. And it's very convenient to walk down my driveway, hit the street, go for a nice walk. We were down on the end of Jefferson Road one day, and mind you, people come off of Hillsborough, which is 55 miles an hour, and they hit that veer. It's not a hard ride, it's a veer. And they hit that veer going at full speed. And it's 35 miles an hour when you hit the road. And it goes down to 25 miles an hour and then 10 miles an hour, actually at the speed bump, one of the speed bumps. So this lady comes off of Hillsborough doing 55 miles an hour. She hits Jefferson Road. She can't maintain her lane. Me and my dog are walking. We had to jump in the ditch so we would not be hit by our car. People use that road as a cut through, coming off of Hillsborough, going down to the bridge to cross over into Morgan and Walton Counties. They do not maintain the right speed, although all that is posted. There's even a flashing light to tell you how fast you're going. But they, I've seen people hit those speed bumps airborne. And I cannot imagine what it will be like if we have 35 more houses exiting out onto Jefferson Road, potentially with some teenagers, and we all know how teenagers drive. So it's my humble opinion that doing this would change the fabric of North High Shoals forever. And once we do that, we cannot go back. And it's not in the best interest of the existing residents of the community. I saw Megan and her husband's children playing in the road today, riding their bicycles. We walk our dogs. There are elderly people that walk out to go to their mailboxes. It is, I know that there was an incident with a child getting off of a school bus one time. I've had people pass me on Jefferson Road when I'm driving home 25 miles an hour. They literally have passed me. So I just respectfully ask you, please, don't take our community away from us. And thank you for your time.
Megan. Megan, you want to speak?
Hello. So I just wanted to speak specifically about the precedent, excuse me, of this new code that we have. And speaking with a couple of you, it seems the theme of your response is, do we oppose the de-annexation? And I'll argue that a de-opposition, it would be the same as an acceptance for the, the theme of the document. Also, it says in Section 8, Line 86, if the governing authority of the county consents to the de-annexation and the de-annexation conforms with the requirements of this article, the governing authority of the municipal, municipal corporation shall approve such de-annexation unless it finds the de-annexation would be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the residents, et cetera. My point in this is that this is essentially saying that the town has the authority to make this decision or the county has the authority to make this decision. And in the casual decision of, we don't oppose it. If you guys don't want it, we want it. We'll accept the, the property. Doesn't, doesn't address the underlying issue of the county, the way it's written, has more power than the town, from my interpretation of this. And if we allow for And if we allow for, if you end up voting specifically not to oppose the de-annexation, I would request some verbiage that would specify that the decision is in the power of the town's decision-making capabilities to address the issues of if we approve the de-annexation or not. If that makes sense. And I will say, as a member of the community and a member of the council, I do oppose the de-annexation of that property. Thank you.
Mayor Dahl.
Good evening. I'm the present mayor for the next three weeks. Sorry. And I'm having trouble with my voice tonight. So I wanted to thank all the citizens for coming out today. And actually, this has sort of pulled the town together, which is very nice, brought citizens together. The historical limit of North High Shoals is there. We have not, you know, annexed other property into the town. That's been the historic limit for a long time. This law that came into effect mid-2023 has a lot of unexpected consequences. And if the de-annexation can happen here, as somebody said, it can happen in any town throughout the state. And this can lead to a lot of problems. Nothing, this is a new law. There's no legal precedence for it. It's going to put, if it happens, it's going to put High Shoals in a really sad situation that we don't want to be in. So I appreciate all the people coming out and the citizens, and I would definitely ask not to approve the de-annexation. Thank you so much.
So we did go over 20 minutes, but we did get everybody on the list. That will open up any questions and comments from commissioners.
I don't know if I've got questions. I've got feelings and stuff. I feel like if it was before Christmas, I'd be the Grinch. But I didn't ask for it, didn't go looking for this property. I'm still trying to figure my way with the law. But in fact, I'm certified to sit on annexation hearings for ACCG. And I'm not crazy about annexations either. I've seen some really bad ones. But what I'm sensing, from what I feel and what I'm hearing, is a disconnect. And I think we need to get that disconnect fixed tonight. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not pretending to be, but I, you know, I walked in here tonight, you know, I really would like High Shoals to be the ones that deal with this. Because I'm not looking for it, didn't ask for it. So my understanding is, and it may be, we need to say, if we vote yes and it passes, what's the next step for these folks? If we vote no, then what's the next step for those folks and these folks? So, you know, my feeling has been, if we voted for it, it was not saying, as Megan said, it's not saying that we're taking that property. It goes back to you. Don't make the call. If I'm wrong, then we need to get it cleared up. So that's where I am. Yeah, but I think it has to go to the government. I hear you. I hear you. But I think it's got to go before the mayor and council as to what their steps are going to be. Because I've never said I'm going out looking for Mr. Towns' property. It's never been. It's all on me. So I think all I'm trying to do is get an understanding between two groups of people and do it tonight.
That's my understanding as well, is by not objecting or approving the resolution, it puts it back into the town councils.
I'm absolutely 100% certain. If the county consents tonight, the next step that takes place is it goes back to the North High Shoals City Council, which can then turn it down on the basis of safety, health, and public welfare. And I think we all heard a lot of input on those factors tonight. That's not really in front of the Board of Commissioners. Boy, just the legislature didn't do any of us any favors by the way they wrote this. There are no standards set out for the county's consent or not consent. The discussion that was held at the City-City Attorney Seminar, which was held just recently, was that that was almost an afterthought that was thrown in to prevent cities from dumping problems onto a county. And I'll tell you, I doubt there was one person out of the 300 attorneys that were in that room that had any real thought about a conversation like this. I also don't think there was much, the legislature put a whole lot of thought into what happens with small towns. Because what they did, what they said was, property owners have the right to de-annex. That was where they went, Property Owners Rights Act. And I'd suggest that small towns probably should contact TMA. There's probably some conversation about what this legislature does to a small town. I think the standard for the county is that we can't act arbitrarily and capriciously in refusing to grant consent. But once we grant consent, it's up to the city council, to the mayor and city council, to determine whether this acts to the detriment of the citizens of North High Shoals. The power for de-annexation is in the city council. Now, their limitation is, they've got to approve it unless it acts to the detriment of the citizens' public health, safety, and welfare. That's pretty broad. There's a lot of catchphrase out there on that. The guy's shaking his head because we both know that's a pretty broad tool for a city, or county, from that side of it.
And I'll say, historically, on the other side during annexations, we have not created a lot of opposition or objections to cities and towns annexing when it was, may or may not have been, there hadn't been a whole lot of it, but that's kind of been our stance. And I do like hearing people say that they like the historical limits of the cities. That should keep us from annexing any further.
We can't hear you. Can you speak more?
Yes.
I'll make a couple of comments. I want to.
I would generally agree with them, except for the one word that's in the code section where the legislature said "shall" approve, talking about municipality. That word carries a little bit of weight, and I would be concerned that if the de-annexation resolution's approved here tonight, that one word makes it a little harder for the city to not approve the petition.
Except it says, unless it would be to the detriment of the public health, safety, and welfare.
I just, that one word just kind of gives me a little pause.
Slater, Shoals, the resolution was adopted on January 2nd, 2024. I got this three days ago. So how am I holding this? This document says that you already read this and you're ready to sign.
That is typical. We put our resolutions on the website and on everything that we're voting on tonight, whether it's approved or not, has. Right, do you see a signature on there? Okay, so it's not been voted, it's not been voted on. Ma'am? That is our normal process. If you go look at all our rezones, there's information, there's. Okay, that's fine. Thank you for your question. Yes, ma'am.
I've got some.
Is the commissioner's time?
Yeah, I think so.
Commissioner's time now. Okay.
I appreciate all of y'all being here tonight. I want to begin, before speaking specifically to the topic, I want to thank Mayor Violet Dahl for her service to the town of North High Shoals. Also in the audience, I noticed the daughter of a former mayor, Mayor Queen. So there's a lot of history here. And I also see a former wife. I assume he's still married to the former Mayor Bell. Yes. And of course, Mayor Thomas for a number of years. So there's no doubt that there's a community there in North High Shoals that is second to none. So I applaud y'all for that and what y'all have done. This new law is just that. And what we, y'all can attest, and we all can attest, there are some bad laws that are made in Atlanta. Although you could say there are bad laws made in Washington, and probably some of y'all would accuse us of making bad laws as well, rightfully or not. But I think we do owe the legislature the credit for making this bad law for all of us. Because it's not, y'all are, as I was telling Mayor Dahl earlier this afternoon, she mentioned about being on the cutting edge. I said, no, North High Shoals is going to be on the bleeding edge. Because y'all are going to become a test case for this law because there's no precedent. There's no one, this is a new law. So y'all are, as they say, plowing your ground here. And I think the legislature did a disservice, not only to the citizens of North High Shoals, but every community, town, city, whatever size. Because I think this law, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor Haygood, applies to every municipality, regardless of size. So whether it's the city of Atlanta or the town of North High Shoals, this law impacts all of us. And of course, you know how that law is made, it's probably slipped in with another law. Nobody knew it. I'm not finished. Let me finish. One thing that we hear, like to tell our legislators in Atlanta, is we want local control. We don't want the folks in Atlanta telling us what to do. And they'll give us the time of day and say, yes, we believe in local control, but they don't necessarily act like that. So I'm sure y'all are here thinking that, you know, the town of North High Shoals wants to retain local control. They don't want them folks in Watkinsville telling them what to do. Now, I don't disagree with you. Because you need to be, have the destiny of your community in your hands. I think what I heard in all the conversations I've had with the staff, the attorneys and whatnot, is that, you know, semantics about the wording. And ma'am, the reason those resolutions are made ahead of time is because it's expedient for the staff. So if we do approve it tonight, it's here while we're all here to sign it. It doesn't become, it doesn't become until we sign it. So I appreciate your point, but let me, I'll back up the chairman on that. But I think what we, I'm opposed to this whole idea of y'all losing a historic part of your city, your town. As you said, you did not annex this in. It's been there from the get-go, however many hundreds of years ago that was. But you know, if the town of High Shoals wants to de-annex it, I don't think I have a problem with that. If that's what y'all want to do, I'm all in favor of it. If y'all want to de-annex it. So I think, I think the young lady had a good suggestion. Mr. Chairman, I know that that resolution has all those whereas and thereforths. But I think what it boils down to is that if the town of North High Shoals wants to approve the de-annexation, then we ought to consent to that. Now, I'm not sure how you can do it legally, Mr. Counselor, but we always used to call it pre-approval at the bank, you know, give us a pre-approval on the loan. But what I would suggest is that if the town of High Shoals approves the de-annexation, we give them a prior approval on the consent to accept that land back out of the city, back into the county. And that's just a suggestion. I think that's a good idea that the young lady had, is to make it contingent, our consent contingent on the town of North High Shoals approving the de-annexation.
I don't have any problem with adding that in because that's what the law says anyway.
I know, but it's all, I don't like all these whereas and thereforths because my eyes just glaze over when I see all that. But it cuts to the quick. If these folks don't want it, that's their business. But if they do want it, I'm fine. I have no problem with it. Now you can ask your questions. That's all.
You have the commissioners.
I'm going to go back. I don't know what else to do. I mean, I think what we're saying is, y'all make the call. That's how I look at it. If we have to go through this process, as ugly as it seems to be, it is the process. I don't want to make a call for you. I like history. It's just, unfortunately, it's developed this way. And I can tell you, I just finished up 15 years on the county commission. And dealing with what goes on in Atlanta, it may not have anything to do with most of the state, but it'll screw it up. I can do that. None of us are safe when they meet. I wish they'd meet 24 hours and they got to leave. Because this, you know, a few months back, we didn't have this issue. Things were kind of rocking around pretty good. But, you know, now we got to deal with it. And none of us here voted that way. That's what we got. And I agree. I want High Shoals to deal with this. That's where it is. That's where the boundary is. That's where the property is. But again, if it's still Oconee County, if you guys want to give it up, what we going to tell them? That's how I look at it. Y'all don't want that property, where else are they going to go? Ain't go Watkinsville. Have to go to Oconee County. So that's, I just want you to know, when we leave here, it's not us shopping for property. It never was.
Mr. Chairman, I do have, wait a minute, let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman, if it's possible. If we couch our words in such a way that it's subject to their, the cities, the town of North High Shoals approval, can y'all live with that? I'm talking to the incoming mayor and the outgoing mayor and anybody else that's coming into the city council. If y'all approve it, y'all want us to accept it. I'm just asking, if y'all want the de-annexation, do y'all want us to take it back? No, I'm asking the city, your city council members, the officials. Before I vote, I need to know if y'all want to approve this, do you want us to take the property? Saying that we would consent if y'all want to, if y'all approve it, then we would consent. It's like prior approval. Now, if you don't want it, then it's a mute point. But it's up to your city council and But it's up to your city council and mayor to make that decision. Well, that's right. I would like for y'all to have had that vote before you came here myself. But y'all not having a public hearing until next month and probably not dealing with the vote until February, right? But my point is, is that all I'm saying is, if y'all don't want it, that's fine. But if you do want it, do y'all want us to consent to take the land back from North High Shoals if y'all want to de-annex it? I know it sounds confusing. But I'm asking the mayor and the incoming mayor, is that what you want? If y'all want to de-annex it, do you want us to take it back? So you're fine with it coming back to us if y'all approve the de-annexation? Y'all haven't voted yet. Okay. Hey, that's fine. But y'all haven't voted yet. I know that. And I'm all for, I'm all for you. Well, I appreciate, I should say, I appreciate that, Fred. I appreciate that vote. But I'm just asking if, I mean, because we're gonna leave here with a decision tonight. We're not gonna postpone this, are we, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, so we're gonna make a decision before we leave here. So we're trying to work this thing out.
Saying that that's what the, the code says. However, without any precedent or without any verbiage in that, I think that our citizens would be at ease with their resolutions and spelled out where the decision-making capability was for that.
Commissioner Harden, if we added to the end of operative language after you get past all the whereas, we just simply said, subject to the approval of such de-annexation by the town of North High Shoals under their authority granted by section 36, 36, 131.
Yes, Mr. Incoming Mayor. Yeah, that's what politics is all about. Put people on the spot. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you're, you're, you're all about being put on the spot. Yeah. Yeah, but I want to do what y'all want to do. If you want it, then we'll accept it. You, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't, you have not.
All right, that's enough. We're not getting into shoutouts across the aisles here. So with that, we'll, would you like to make a motion?
If we can make sure the verbiage is that it's up to the town of North High Shoals to make the decision, if they want to approve it, then we'll accept the de-annexation.
All right, that's, no more outbursts, please. Have a seat. No, we're done with public comment on this one. So. I didn't get your name. Sizmore. Thank you. So whatever's in the resolution cannot override the state law. So I think Daniel put in there a clarification that the decision does go back. Is that sufficient to what you were looking for?
I think what I'd like to do is, is to give the other commissioners a chance to chime in. If they're not in favor of what I'm thinking about, then it's a moot point. So I know that vote here in a few minutes, one way or the other, but I'm just know that others may have an opinion they may want to express.
I do have a question though, because I let's say, for instance, Daniel, you may have to help us out here. We vote against it. Who does the property owner come to? At us? And we don't have anything to do with it. We have nothing to do with it. And so I'm gonna go back. I want High Shoals to get in the fight, not the county government. And we vote against it. And then property owner comes to us, not in our jurisdiction, in your jurisdiction. That's how I see it. And so what advantage does the, does the unincorporated side have by getting in the fight they didn't even start? No, no. We'll do the talk. So that's, that's how I feel. If you want, if you want to know how, how I look, I want you guys to be in the fight, make the call.
That's up to y'all for on that, but I don't know that that's accomplished to me.
Is, as I said, we're into, in a struggle that we didn't start. And gotta do something. If we table it to vote on another day, y'all better vote. You better vote. You better vote. And you don't table it. Because it's your, it's your, it's your issue. It's not ours.
Um, just, just a point of clarification. The county commissioners have to act first, the way the statute is written.
Okay, well, that settles that. settles that part.
Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll just chime in. I'm with you, Commissioner Harden, that I'd like to see some verbiage go in that, in this language that would strengthen High Shoals' position. And so, Mr. Counsel, if you can do that
Can you re-印 this resolution? Addition to the resolution?
Yeah, just at the end of the operative, which is we consent, I think what you would add is, subject action approving the de-annexation by the mayor and council of North High Shoals under OCGA session 36, 36, 131.
Yes, sir. We have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting the resolution up to accept the land subject to the approval of the town of North High Shoals for them to approve the de-annexation.
Under that code?
Under that code section.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second for approval with the changes noted by the county attorney. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider the county fire rescue SCBA replacement cylinders contract. So in our SPOS budget for this year, we had a budget to replace 171 breathing apparatus cylinders. These are on life cycle replacement. They had to be replaced every 15 years. So we accepted bids and we got two bids. Replacement cost of the cylinders is $220,590. And will come from the 2021 SPOS line item. They are winning the bid that's being recommended by staff is from municipal emergency services for $220,590. Any questions on those?
Oh, I did have, ask for clarification. How many breathing air cylinders do we have in stock? I mean, how many do we normally?
It's just a replacement of the existing stock, 171.
So we're gonna replace them all? Okay, okay.
Yeah, keep it on, everything on the same. It's hard to keep up with once you start phasing those in and out. People move them around. Every 15 years, we'll have an expense.
John, does that include the ones on the new air truck?
Yes. These are just the ones that, guys, we're just back. Any other questions on this item? We have any public comment on the purchase of the breathing apparatus cylinders? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve O'Conne County Fire Rescue SCBA replacement cylinders contract as submitted.
We have a motion is second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider road maintenance IGA between O'Conne County and North High Shoals. As you know, Hickory Lake and Hickory Ridge subdivisions split county and city boundaries with approximately 43% of the roads in the county and 57% of the roads within the town limits. We, this road is, these roads have been in need of repaving for a few years now. We've approached the city or town a couple of times. Last communication was back in July of 2021, where they stated they did not have the funds at that time, but would hope to have some by the 2023 year. So we're up for our cycle on repaving. We've, in the meantime, I've had conversations with one of the council members about wanting, they're getting complaints about the roadway as well. Want to try to figure out what the cost of that would be. So I asked Daniel to draw up this IGA, and the maximum get, maximum price would be $625,000 to pave the 1.93 miles. That will also include some drainage corrections with the curving gutter. There's some issues with some of the drainage caps in that. So the process would be, we would approve this, we would send this over to the town for consideration. Their biggest expense would be 57% of the $625,000. We do think we'll come in under that. We just want to put a number in here that we knew would be the maximum guaranteed cost. We feel like we'll come in there under that significantly. We're currently getting prices from our paver on the roadway and also our concrete guy for, to correct some of the curving gutter issues that exist in the subdivision on both sides. Once that final quote is in, we'll share that with the town and they will submit, if they approve this document, they will submit their 57% of that. And we'll manage that contract along with our normal paving process. Any questions on?
This was at the request of the town? Do this?
Yes, there's been conversations over several years, but they are starting to get complaints on their end as well. The roads need, if it's not approved, I would say we would go ahead and try to make the improvements on ours without, because it's getting to that point where it's got to be addressed. We'll take any, any questions for commissioners? All right, we'll take the public comment at this time. You've got public? That's correct. There is a service, there is a service delivery strategy. I've looked those up. There was some reference made to another IGA on county roads and paving and sharing. There's no document like that listed in any of our minutes nor can find any of our, in our files. The service delivery strategy lists as county roads that run through the city. We have those listed. We are maintaining those. That would be Race Church Road, previously Hillsborough Road. Then we have Gober Road as well. So all those roads are being maintained by O'Conne County at this time as per our service delivery strategy. Typically, anything in within the city will be handled by similar to what these two subdivisions, they were created crossing lines. So there's a place where the county road starts and a place where the town road starts. Each jurisdiction taking care of its own roadway. That's correct. Any other public comment?
Chair Daniel was referring to, I'm having trouble, I guess both of us have trouble finding intergovernmental agreement that was from the 90s to about 2010. It talked about through roads. And this agreement was made, I believe, before the subdivision in question. And the agreement said that through roads would be paved by the county. And I would ask for a more generous distribution of the division of the roads, especially since the city just took you know, a mile and, a mile or more of paving off the county's hands in Hillsborough. And that this is a pretty big bill for a small city, especially it looks like there's going to be other bills that we're going to have to be doing too in the future with other items here that have been at this meeting. And, you know, that's, you know, we've been talking for, since the subdivisions were, came into our town about the price of paving those roads. And before SPOS, it was not something that the city could have even afforded to do. And, you know, there's since SPOS, this people are asking, you know, for other things. Like one of the things the citizens ask for is, hey, can you take over Hillsborough from the county? And so I would, as a future council member, you know, like to talk about this agreement with the county chair and the commissioners and ask for a more generous distribution of the bill for this. And I'm not aware that the city has come to the county. Is that, am I wrong about that? As a member of the city council or?
I know there's been communications back in '21 with Mayor Bradbury at the time. We've, it's my understanding that we've approached the town on, prior to that as well, trying to get the road. We didn't want to come in and just do partial of the roadway. We're trying to get it all knocked out.
So this is.
We're trying to respect the, the timing of what the town was looking for. I had been approached by an existing council member about a, what would it look like if we were to go ahead with the paving? That's what we, why we drafted this. If it's approved here tonight, then it'll come before your council. And hopefully by then, we'll have a little more solid numbers to look at. 625 is a pretty high number. I don't anticipate it'll be, be that, but we just didn't want to get in a situation where we put down what we thought it was today and it's $10 over and have.
Right, but even half of that takes away half of our paving bill already.
And the three roads, all the three roads are listed in the service delivery strategy. I don't know that you could call those subdivision roads three roads.
That's, that's where we.
And I do know that the previous administration would, would stop paving at the city limits even on a county road. So I saw that actually happen on Elder Road. So I don't think there was anything in place prior to that would say we would pave anything on a, on the town street in the subdivision. We've done an extensive search numerous times and it just does not exist. The only thing we have is a service delivery strategy with the highlighted roads that the county would be responsible for that pass through the city.
Which I would contend that these roads do. Especially Hickory Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a clarification question. Did I hear a minute ago that Jefferson Road would always be maintained as a, as a town road? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
And my name is Hilda Kurtz. I'm a member of the North High Shoals Town Council, so we will be looking at this issue at our next meeting. And I am really concerned with that bill, that amount of money, because that's, that would be quite a struggle for the town. And I'm just curious as to how And I'm just curious as to how, where that number comes up, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a, a mile? How, is there, are there records, are there public records that would be viewable by citizens and say council members as to how that estimate?
Get the agreement, you'll be able to read and see that we'll go out and get the specific quote. So we're taking estimates of what our staff thought it would take with quantities and the work that needs to be done. And then we put a contingency on top of that, just so we didn't have to come back and deal with it again.
Sure, I understand, what I'm, what I'm asking is, is there a publicly available for review record of the, of the amounts of money that have been spent to maintain Oconee County roads?
Yes.
To do this work? How would we, how would us?
You can go on our website, we have annual budget that's published and of the, all our audits as well.
Okay.
Uh, all our bid processes are also online under the finance tab.
Would we be able to, from those numbers, either see or calculate the price per, the cost per mile?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay.
We can get the invoices for, to the, from the, uh, supplier.
Okay.
There's all kind of things that go into what a mile cost, and so this is the average mile cost, is how much deep patching do you have to do? How much milling has to be done? You know, curb and gutter roads take more milling than a great ditch road.
Yeah.
There's a lot of factors that go in, so they're just taking the number, dividing it over all the roads we pave.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand, and I understand the padding of the estimate a bit, you know, we're familiar with the strategy. Uh, but we just, we're, we're gonna wanna, I'm gonna wanna look at some more specific numbers before we have that conversation.
Like I said, that, that will have, the final document will have a specific quote from all the vendors that are involved.
Great.
Or for the entire subdivision, and then it will be divided up based on the mileage within the town and within the county.
Thank you.
I would also say we, we vote in public on those contracts. We vote in public. Be on the agenda, our public works director bears it, we vote. Nothing, nothing behind the doors or anything like that.
And, and there, there's always the option for, for y'all to go to your own contractor as well, if you think that would be a better deal for you. No hard feelings there, but we, we feel like for sure, we're gonna have to repair outside of the, the roads uh, during this next paving season because of the condition of them and some of the curb and gutter issues that need to be corrected. So regardless of how you want to perceive, we're, we're gonna go ahead with ours. Any other public comment? Any other questions from commissioners?
May have a, just a quick statement about all of this. I know we've kind of been going back and forth with these contracts, but I will tell you from personal experience that you may want to even go and investigate your own infrastructure and have either an engineer, as I know you guys have done that in, in certain cases. But, um, investigate what infrastructure needs to be improved and then have that set up in your documents as to, as to what you want to have replaced and repaired. Because certain things like culverts are not real evident when you pave over the top of them, sometimes you can have problems later on that result from that culvert. And if you paved over the top of it, got new asphalt on it, then that's just additional expense that you're gonna have. So it, it might be that you do some homework ahead of time before you pave these areas to make sure you don't have some sub-surface problems before you get into the paving process.
No further questions or discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to approve road maintenance IGA between Oconee County and North High Shoals.
A motion is second to approve, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is the FY twenty-five budget supplemental plan. So as with the new year, we're in the new budget season, so we have before us the budget supplemental plan. So if this is approved tonight, we'll start tomorrow with a supplemental plan, uh, with a budget request to the offices and departments of the county. We ask those requests be back to us by February fifteenth. There'll be an administrative review on March first through the fifteenth with the recommendations back to departments. March eighteenth through the twentieth. The departments and offices of the county will be able to set up meetings to review the recommendations. April twenty-first through, excuse me, March twenty-first through April twelfth, the budget consolidation will occur. April fifteenth through the nineteenth, uh, distributions and reviews with the commissioners will occur. Our first public hearing will be May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Second public hearing will be May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and budget adoption on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions about supplemental plan?
I don't have a question about supplemental plan, but since we're starting the budget process tomorrow, I, I'd like to go on record, Mr. Chairman, that I think it's, I enjoy us not having to have a need for public hearings for tax increases. I would like to see that continue, if we've had two years, so let's do what Georgia couldn't do, let's have a three-peat this year and not have to have a need for public hearing for any kind of tax increase.
Thank you, everybody's on board with that.
All right, I just want to go on record before the budget process starts.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is the public hearing on proposed abandonment of Hillsborough Road inside the city limits of North High Shoals. As you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time. Uh, we've received a resolution from the town of North High Shoals to accept the roadway. We've run the necessary advertisements, uh, and deck, and done the necessary declarations, and now we're into the public hearing for the abandonment of Hillsborough Road, which will run from the city limits to State Route one eighty-six. Am I missing anything, Daniel?
Just to say that upon our abandonment and executing a quitclaim deed to North High Shoals, road becomes part of the municipal road system by operation.
Very good. With that, we'll open up to any comments related to the abandonment of Hillsborough Road from city limits or town limits to State Route one eighty-six. You'll come on up, yes, ma'am?
I want a clarification, you said it becomes a part of the municipal wide system? And would you explain what that is? So it'd be the city roads? Okay, so that means that Jefferson Road, Plantation Road, those are all city roads? So that means that Hillsborough Road becomes back and it's part of the city roads? Okay, I just wasn't sure what municipal, what, was that bad, it's sort of saying it's part of the?
Any other public comment? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed abandonment of Hillsborough Road inside the city limits of North High Shoals. Aye.
Your motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider qualifying fees for twenty twenty-four, Daniel, you got that one or?
Um, this is pretty simple, three percent of the base salary for each, uh, position that's, um, uh, running. And you've got a chart that shows that the, uh, the chairman's fee is three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Each member of the commission, the qualifying fee is seven fifty-five, thirty-six. Members of the void of education, fifty-four dollars. And our constitutional officers, uh, two thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars, fifty-one cents. And the coroner, one hundred and eight dollars. So, uh, you just have to approve this each, each election cycle prior to February first, so it's on the agenda for tonight. Again.
Any questions for Daniel? Do we have any public comment? We'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion as second to approve the qualifying fees as presented, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. So this item is a discuss and consider the twenty twenty-four speed detection device permit updates, so we have a few changes. Uh, the first is Duff Creek, uh, State Route fifty-three school zone in front of Duff Creek Elementary and Middle Schools. Uh, this will run from Baxter Court to just north of Barber Creek. Currently, the speed limit is fifty-five in the school zone, it will drop to fifty miles an hour on the speed zone. It'll also be part of the radar permit for the sheriff's office to run radar there. Uh, the second item is Race Church Road. This is about point two miles, uh, west of State Route three, will be dropping from fifty-five miles an hour to forty-five. Uh, that's to, uh, correct the speeds going into the new roundabout, to make some of the design standards there. Also adding to the radar permit is Osborne Road, this will run from State Route fifty-three to Hebron Church Road. Uh, speed limits will stay the same, but we will have deputy sheriffs that can, uh, issue citations along that roadway. We're also creating a school zone on the permit for that same, or for in front of Duff Creek Elementary and Middle School on school days, or Osborne Road as well. A new High Shoals Road from US four forty-one, the Union Church Road, will be dropping from fifty-five miles an hour to fifty miles an hour. And also new High Shoals Road, school zone for Westchester Christian Academy, certainly there is no schools on there. So there will be one posted, the speed limit will drop from fifty-five to forty miles an hour for that school zone. That's a quick summary of the changes that are being submitted for the speed detection permit. Do we have any questions on that? Any public comment? All right, can we'll entertain a motion then?
I make a motion to approve the speed detection permit as presented.
Your motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider alcohol license renewal for all county fast mart. Holly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, yes. Oconee Fast Mart has presented a renewal application for the retail package sale of beer and wine. Their application was not presented with the other alcohol license renewal request due to a pending investigation by an administrative hearing officer for the alleged sale to an underage person by an employee of the store. The officer's ruling did come in December twenty-first and was attached for your review to the packet.
Do not see anybody from the store here tonight to present. Any questions for commissioners on this item? There's a ten-day suspension based on the timing of it, the, the criminal charges are still pending, is my understanding? Not able to get a full listing of all the charges that were added to that, but believe some of that was beyond underage selling of the alcohol. So I'm waiting for an update, we do know that the disposition of that is not completed through the criminal justice system. Be my recommendation that we turn down the request for renewal to something, makes its way through the system.
All right, say that again to make sure I understood what you said.
I'd like to, I would recommend that we deny the renewal and then they can resubmit later on once some of this is worked through. I would, was expecting somebody to show up and kind of talk through what happened and what they can, but.
Can, can I suggest that you base the, uh, turning the license down on the suspension of the license for underage sale, because they, purposes of the license, they admitted to that.
Yeah.
And then later on, if they want to reapply, that's, that's up to them.
The recommendation is to deny the renewal based on the sale of under, sale to underage citizens.
I see.
We have a motion as second to deny renewal, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider alcohol license for the new owner of Your Pie.
Thank you again, yes, the Your Pie Restaurant at Capital Avenue is being sold to Archer Grove Operations. Um, the sale is not scheduled to go through till January twenty-second, but they have gone ahead and applied for retail consumption on premises of beer and wine. The new registered agent, Mr. Jonathan Wood, is here tonight in the building doing his RAS training. Um, this request, uh, is contingent on a few things, that would be the closing documents on the sale, the franchise agreement with the new owner, the Oconee County business license, and that he does complete the training and the background check prior to us issuing this license. But we're requesting it early so that there won't be any disruption of business for the new owners as the sale takes place.
Any questions for Holly on this item? We'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Your motion is second to approve, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. We do not have native and executive session, so Commissioner Sacks?
Motion adjourned. Second.
We are adjourned.